It's called the Meeting to Order, stands for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the God of the United States of America, the innocent Republic of which stands one nation under God, universal liberty and justice for all.
So, pardon my scratchy voice, everyone, just, you know, getting over a cold. So, first up, we have the approval of minutes for the February 6th, 2024 work session and special meeting, February 13th, 2024 regular meeting, the February 27th, 2024 special meeting, and the February 29th, 2024 special meeting. And we also have the February 29th, 2024, I think I left that off. That's for the joint meeting with the town and the village. If I could get a motion to approve the minutes?
Some...
Second. Mr. McCarthy?
Mr. McCarthy.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Edelman Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rotsch?
Yes.
Mr. Warden Haskins?
Yes. Okay. Is there any public comment on the agenda items? Yes?
Nancy Bryan, I'd like to speak to agenda item number one. Michael Zayas is, and I know he's going to present to the board, which is very good. I'm not, this has nothing to do in support or not in support of the type of business. I have some concerns. I was very happy to see that Gary Vincent raised some very serious questions, and I certainly hope that this town board takes those into very serious consideration, because this is very important considering the location. A few concerns I have in the form that was provided in the documents. It says DBA is hybrid theory, but on the state form it says Hudson Valley Cannabis Club LLC. I'm hoping to understand exactly what a microbusiness is, because I thought last week we were told it was a wholesale operation, but on the state website it describes a microbusiness as retail sale. It also says cultivation is either at that location or at a separate location. My other big concern is once, if this, whether it's approved, not approved, my overriding concern is for the safety of this business, and what exactly is it going to contain? Is it going to contain vaping supplies, which has to do with butane storage? And there was recently just a very large fire down in New York City for a cannabis store that had butane canisters that nobody knew about. And so, that sort of thing is a big concern to me, that building codes and fire codes are followed to the letter. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? No? Okay. All right, so, first up, we have the hybrid theory microbusiness permit application. And so, just real quick, and I'm going to try not to talk that much tonight. You know, look, we're all new to this as well. As you know, the town did opt out, what was it, in 2021, to retail sales and onsite consumption licenses, but there's this whole other, you know, area of permits that are allowed. This is the first one that's come to us, the first 30-day community notice. I believe we're also allowed to ask for an additional 30 on top of that. So, we will do our due diligence on this. I believe the applicant's like number 800 and something in the queue. So, he's got 849 applications ahead of him before I think the state even looks at his application. So, we, you know, we have plenty of time to look into this. And obviously, you know, we can talk to the Association of Towns. We can talk to other municipalities who have dealt with this. But again, this is all new, and I'm sure you've also seen in the papers. The governor has ordered a review from the bottom up, because they've said that the rollout's been a disaster. I think is like what she said yesterday and the day before. So, you know, with that in mind, I am going to invite up Michael Zayas to just sort of give us, you know, just tell us what he's planning on doing, and, you know, at the location. And then, I guess, to answer any questions that, you know, the board might have. Thank you.
Everybody? I printed out a few copies of a business plan, a general summary of everything. I printed out three, sorry, I brought more.
Oh, that's okay. Share over there. Okay?
Yeah, I'm applying for a microbusiness license in the state of New York. The state just released these licenses, I believe, in October. It's been a slow rollout. I believe they had about seven different licenses, ranging from cultivation to processing, distribution, dispensary, onsite consumption, and microbusinesses and nurseries. So, I'm applying for the microbusiness, which allows me to cultivate, process, distribute, and retail at a limit. That's what it is. For this location, I'm not opting into retail. So, I'm only doing the cultivation, the processing, the packaging, and then I'll be distributing, mainly focusing on the city and Westchester. That's where I think a lot of the business is going to be. I did find some affordable warehouse space in this town, which is why I'm looking to do it here.
Okay.
Can you describe the nature of your business? You could be growing marijuana plants in the warehouse.
Yeah, yeah, so it'll be similar to like an indoor farm. Hydroponics using LED lights, starting from the seed. I'll be cultivating it, then harvesting it, packaging it, and then shipping it down south.
Does it get processed at all?
So, the processing is mostly drying. So, once I harvest it, I dry it for about 10 days, and then I trim all the leaves off, put it into jars, following the New York State packaging, which is child-safe approved containers and everything. And then it gets tested through a lab, and then once everything comes back clean, then I can present that to dispensaries.
What's involved in the packaging as far as the machinery goes? How's that processed?
Right now, I'm doing everything by hand, so this is a microbusiness. So, with my experience, for the last three years, I've been operating as a caregiver for the state of New York. There's medical patients and caregivers, so I've been doing that, and it allows me to do 12 plants for my patients. So, everything's been a small scale. So, once I saw these licenses open up in the state of New York, I thought this would be a great opportunity to explore the recreational market. So, again, it's a small operation. You know, that's why it's a microbusiness, especially with the injunctions that have been happening. I feel that the microbusiness is better than just doing a cultivation or just doing the processing, because there's been so many places that have been farming, and they don't have a place to sell it, or vice versa. Some of these storefronts opened up, but there's no product. So, this microbusiness allows me to do everything, but at a limit.
Do you have a lease at Two Mill Street, or is it just an option?
So, right now, it's just the option. We're going to do the sign and date April 1st, but I wanted to make sure that everything was good with everybody in the town. I did see that the town of Cornwall opted out for onsite consumption and retail, which I'm not doing at all. And the village is, but I don't plan on doing that. So, I'm planning on, yeah, cultivating, processing, and distribution. And under my license, I am allowed to do retail or delivery or something, but if I do that, it'll be in Westchester or the city again, where demand is higher and profits are probably higher also.
How many square feet are you looking at in Mill Street?
About 700 square feet.
And as far as the lighting for the plants, how does that work? Do you bring in separate lighting units? Are you wiring the building?
LED lights. So, I'm just gonna, I think we're probably gonna have eight lights, eight LED lights, and, yeah, plug them into outlets, daisy chain them through ethernet cable, and I have one controller.
And you said 700 square feet?
Yes.
What kind of traffic are we looking at for hauling the product out?
Probably use my work vehicle, probably use a truck.
So, you're talking a single van? We're not talking vehicles coming in and out?
No, yeah, no. I plan on doing everything, again, I'm still, you know, I'm kind of expanding from my medical experience right now. So, starting to what I know, and then I want to scale them. So, I'm going to start with what I've been doing, and, yeah.
If you only have 700 square feet, you can't have that many employees. Have you given any thought about how many you might?
Mostly me and my girlfriend, I mean, a couple of friends. But I have to hear back from the state to see how they want to handle it. Because I know I have some friends in Colorado, and the process over there is very vigorous. Anybody who enters a building needs to have identification. It needs to be video camered and everything. So, I'm still waiting to hear back from the state. I'm not sure how far they've gone with that.
I'm sure there's going to be a set of security issues.
Absolutely, yes.
There are a lot of requirements by the state with respect to securing your premises, ventilating your premises, onsite inspections. There's a whole host of compliance issues. Have you looked into those? Do you know how you're going to deal with them?
Yeah, yeah, so, a lot of my experience also is from the restaurant industry. So, you know, I have a lot of experience in my certification in food management, food safety and training, and I'm hoping that this can translate into the cannabis industry.
So, in terms of the actual application, so, when you submit it, like I know with the Liquor Authority, you know, it's a pretty, typically when, you know, folks that submit liquor licenses, the town doesn't usually get a copy of the application. They just get a similar 30-day notice. But then at some point, there is a time when, you know, they would have to interact with the building inspector, you know. So, when does that happen in the process? Like, will there be a point in time when, you know, the cannabis control board reaches out to the building department? Like, when, I guess, when would that happen?
So, as I mentioned before, I'm number 954 on the queue for non...
So, that could be like next year?
It could be, yeah. So, I'm hoping anywhere from the summer to by December, they'll get back to me. They're going to make sure I have all my ducks in the row, the lease, Mr. municipality form, and other forms. So, that's when I'm expecting them to have all the information. Because I've also spoken with some people who've had their conditional license, and they're operating with very little oversight. So, it's, I think it's because the state hasn't brought many things out, but I expect there to be...
I mean, MFNY is a grow, and they package. And they have, they have to go before the planning board in the town of Windsor, and they had to fulfill all sorts of requirements by their planning board. Are you prepared to do that here?
Yeah.
So, well, I mean, I guess the question would be, did New Windsor put on the books special marijuana zoning and use and all of that?
Well, it's an agricultural zone, it's at a particular location, but they're also a processing center. So, they have the cultivation license and the processing license, and then they distribute to retail people who have a retail license.
Yeah, I'm not sure how much licenses they have, sorry to cut you off. The microbusiness license allows me to do, again, do everything at a limit, and I'm not allowed to apply for any other licenses. This is mostly for like craft farmers. It's very similar to the craft beer industry, is what they're relating it to, where the, you know, the brewers actually, you know, mix, ferment, package, and they can sell it or distribute, so that's...
And you're understanding by opening in an opt-out town is that you cannot sell it?
Correct, yeah. Retail dispensary, retail or consumption, not at all.
So, actually, thanks for bringing that. I want to ask, you did say that you're supplying, you will be supplying Westchester and New York City. What prevents people in Cornwall not reaching out to you?
Yeah, I wouldn't allow, because I'm distributing. I'm not going to have any walk-ins. I don't have any access for anybody to come in. It's going to be, you know, secured where I won't see anybody. I'll have access to people who want to reach out to us on social media, which is where we have a big presence, where everybody can see our operation, how clean everything is, and that's what I'm really hoping for.
Can you tell me which building on that site you're proposing to do this in?
Two Mill Street?
Yeah, I know, but there's... But there's, there's three different buildings, the main one, the break one?
It's the main one on the second floor, where the trucks usually...
All right, so it's the first building when you come in?
Yeah.
Okay. So, again, I just want to be clear. You have not met with the building inspector?
Negative.
Like, I'm just being compassionate here?
The building inspector or the office of cannabis management inspector, which one? Because I met with the real estate...
The building inspector, because I'm thinking like you're going into this, I would hate to see you sign a lease and find out that it's not conforming and you can't do what you want to do. That's what I'm concerned about for you.
I have a thing.
I really think you have to do this, because you're talking about an April deadline. Is that a deadline?
No, just lease agreement, potential lease agreement, was April 1st.
I strongly suggest you meet with the building inspector before. I'd hate to see you enter into a lease and find out, oh, I can't do that. Well, that's not fair. Well, you know, I have to do my own...
Some of the questions I kind of had though, so for instance, right, like, if you don't have specific marijuana businesses as allowed uses in the code, but you would fall under, like, what, logistics or, I don't know, how would that?
Well, the way it would work is it starts with the building inspector. The building inspector makes a determination as to whether, A, it's a permitted use, B, it's a prohibited use, or C, it might fall under one of the other, you know, manufacturing type of uses or whatever it may be. If he determines that it's not permitted or prohibited, or it isn't close enough to one of the other uses to fall within it, then it's deemed to be a prohibited use, because under the town code, any use that's not listed as permitted is deemed prohibited. So, then you'd have to come back to the town board and say, please amend the code to allow us to, in the alternative, you could appeal if the building inspector comes down in negative answer. He could appeal to the ZBA and say, no, I think that it does fall within this. Then the ZBA would make a determination. And if he still disagrees with the ZBA, he could bring in Article 78 or say, let the courts decide. But that's something you're going to want to look into before you, you know, sign a lease.
Yeah, no, thank you, I'll do that this week.
Is there any like state preemption of zoning or any of that?
Not on, no.
It wasn't, okay.
The only, the only preemption is to the extent that if it's permitted, you cannot outlaw, you cannot prohibit that particular use. Not as in to say that you have to allow it in every zone in your town. You can allow growing marijuana, for example, in agricultural districts, but not so in residential or business districts. So, that's the type of thing, and the town would have to look at that too. We don't have any place where this type of use is permitted, and you're not allowed to outlaw it. The town would have to look into enacting a zoning amendment that would bring this, at least under the umbrella of some other permitted use within the town. You don't have to specifically say, you know, microbusinesses or cannabis.
I'm thinking at the same building, like, there's art studios and things like that. I'm just trying to think of the big picture there are and other tenants there as well. Can you just, Steve, as far as the law, I noticed, you know, as far as the application for this license, that's a whole process.
Yeah, this is not an applicant, this is a...
I mean, you just had noticed that he supplied for the license, I understand.
We have up to 30 and potentially 60 days to provide our common as a municipality with cannabis control board.
If the board wants another 30 days, you have to write to Alvin. They give you a language and a notice. It's just very simple, it's like a sentence. So, if the board wants an additional 30, you should probably adopt a resolution to ask for an additional 30 days, and then you can look into drafting a letter if that's what you're going to do.
But the state process really has no bearing on what we're doing here right now, or?
Whether this gentleman gets a license or not has no bearing on it. I mean, you can complain about him.
No, 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 I'm just saying, like, to start doing it and not have a license, that's what I'm saying.
But ultimately, he's got to come back and get his zoning approvals and his amended site plan were to be required, which, I don't know. You know, he would have to go and get that, so...
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand what the exact process is.
You know, building permits were involved.
From my point of view in the process, yeah, the licenses came out in October. I started the business, I got the insurance, and then I reached, I submitted the application. And a month later in January, they gave me an email saying, you're in queue, number 900 out of 3,000. And then I reached out to them a few weeks ago. I said, hey, you know, I'm on queue, just wanted to know what I can do to have everything ready for you guys, to, you know, for everyone's convenience.
Sure.
And they said, take a look at numbers 47 to 52 on this PDF. And I saw the municipality form, so I'm kind of just checking everything to make everything convenient. But I haven't really heard from them, and they must be backed up. I mean, I know they're going pretty slow. Just a few days ago, I saw, the state of New York, I believe they released 100 licenses. They kind of announced how many licenses they're offering in each category.
True.
I think they also opened up cultivation for New York State residents as well. So, that's all we're really getting for anybody who's got applications. I only got that one email.
Thank you.
So, it sounds like it probably makes sense for him to essentially take your application. I mean, it'd probably be good if we could see a copy of it, right? I mean, if we're allowed, I mean...
It's a pre-application comment, you can ask it, but it's not required.
Or, no, not at all. I mean, we can't require it, but I'm saying in terms of working with the building inspector, I would think that we would want to, you know, irregardless of, you know, of whether the board comments on this or not, I would think you definitely want to talk to the building inspector, you know, about this.
So, I can bring that, one thing, a couple of things on there. One of them, you can see that I did not check off retail dispensary, so I left everything out, I left the cultivation, processing, distribution. The other thing was, there was a comment about the butane and harmful chemicals that they use in processing. I opted out of that, because, especially with the education and the quality that I use, you know, I try to use as clean as possible, and that's something we look forward to.
Right. I just think, like, when we get something like this, there's not a lot of information. So, if we're asking you a lot of questions, there really isn't a lot of information.
This is the PDF that I downloaded, and they told me to bring forth.
I really hope you do talk to the building inspector. He's a wealth of information.
Awesome, thank you.
And actually, we'll, oh, sure.
Yes, I spoke with the real estate company, the person who runs the grounds, but not the...
Yeah, that's big, that's big. Because they'll tell you that to get you to rent.
Yeah.
Then I don't want you left holding the bag.
Thank you, I know, I'll do that this week.
And then I think there was one question, I know that there was, so, you know, presumably when you submit the application, you have to do it under your LLC, not your DBA, right? So, I guess that's why I'm...
So, yeah, when I applied for, when I started the business, I did Hudson Valley Cannabis Club LLC, and then I put that forward. And then once I saw the list of all 2,000 applicants, there's over a dozen that are HV Cannabis Club or HV Hudson Valley Cannabis. There's somebody who already has a domain, HV Cannabis Club, so I decided to change it there. So, when they reach out to me, they do say they're going to allow edits to the application, so that's one of the things I'm hoping to. So, when I brought it forth to you guys, I wanted to just have that there. I did submit the DBA information to the state under the escort or residence, yeah.
Sure.
So, under the state, it should be filed as Hudson Valley Cannabis Club DBA hybrid theory.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I think obviously, you know, we're gonna, this is the first one we've had. We've got to do a little bit of, you know, research into this. You should definitely talk to the building inspector, and then...
Yeah, I can do that, and I'll bring up application, so you guys can have more information, everything I put in.
Sounds good. Do you have any other questions, anyone? Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, guys.
Okay. So, next up, we have the Banking Development District, Walden Savings Bank. So, look, the good news is, is that we have, demographically, you know, according to the socioeconomic profile that the, that New York State Financial Services pulled when they were reviewing Walden Savings, you know, preliminary application on this, we basically have, I guess, like, the best communities in New York State in terms of, you know, demographics. But the bad news is, they basically said, you could apply, but you're not likely to get it. So, Walden Savings has basically decided that they're not going to submit the Banking Development District application, but they did say they would support our Hometown Heroes Initiative should we decide to proceed with that, and, you know, they will continue with charitable giving. I think they would certainly welcome a list of charities. It's definitely not going to be at the same level that they would at the time they got the 10 million in deposits from the state. But, you know, they're at least going to, you know, continue to keep the bank open in the village, and they want to support the Hometown Heroes program, which I think is good too. So, you know. But obviously, at some point, we're going to be getting a formal letter from the Department of Financial Services that'll go to the bank and the town. So, as soon as I have that, I'll, they'll share that. But this just all came about early, you know, late last week. So, all right, next up, we have a resolution for the hotel and tourism facility tax. This would be to set the public hearing. We did make the one change where we could, you know, go after legal fees. We, right now, we still have the supervisor's office collecting the tax, which, and doing the administration. I think that probably makes sense, at least for the first, you know, six months to a year, as we see what happens, given that Pam's going to have to be very heavily involved in this. I think if we see a change in that, we could always come back and amend that at a later date. I mean, that could be clerk's office, if you could be the receiver of taxes. But it probably makes sense for now just to be essentially our, you know, head financial person that's managing that.
Given the limited number that you have, I think it makes sense to start out this way. And then if it takes off and you start seeing a big increase from the Airbnb people, you may want to amend the law to shift it to, you know, some other area within the town as far as responsibility for administration. But you'll have time to look into that, form committee zonic, talk with your departments, and figure out how to do it if and when that time comes. If it stays like this now with just a few, this will probably be just fine.
All right. Well, I mean, look, just in terms of this too, I think some of you have seen the state right now, the state legislature is trying to negotiate like a statewide, you know, registry for tourism facilities. I don't know where it's going to end up. I mean, they're kind of pushing back a little bit, partially because, like, what I guess what they want is the state to preempt localities from having their own registry and their own enforcement. So, like, essentially, that's what they're trying to get out of it. I don't know where they're going to end up. I mean, I kind of like having our ability to keep tabs on things and having our own. But on the other hand though, it's kind of unfeasible for us to like hunt down every Airbnb in town, and we still have the resources. So, it would be, in my mind, great to have a registry that we could then tie back to this, so we could, you know, collect the, you know, the tourism facility tax. But that's, I guess we'll see where the legislature lands on that, you know.
I just have one question for Steve. I think I brought it up last time. I'm just curious why the enforcement provision isn't tied to the larceny statute like it is for the failure to remit sales tax? So, a person fails to remit sales tax as a business owner, they are, they can be enforced through the larceny statutes, you know, penal code.
This is listed just as misdemeanor for larceny.
Yeah, and it's a misdemeanor, like a town code. It's not attached to the state penal code. I'm just curious, that's the law.
I haven't seen any of these with it as a larceny. I guess...
Perhaps because it's a local law.
Could be done, I don't know, but I followed the other municipalities' format, and so I came down to the misdemeanor. I mean, you're going to go larceny for not paying the town taxes.
I don't know, you go larceny for not paying sales tax.
Miss a lot of hotel taxes, bro. Yeah, no, I hear you.
I was just curious.
It makes sense logically as far as that goes, but...
Right, because you're not reinventing a rule with an additional statute. And for enforcement, you're just referring to a charter statute, but that was the only thing I had a question about.
Well, I think if the board wants to bump it up to larceny, you probably could do that, but nobody else is getting it, so...
Okay, no, I mean, look, certainly, again, I guess if we can see how this plays out over the next six months to a year, whether we're... All right, we're still in the hotel.
I'm sorry.
No, oh, no, I was, I was just explaining how at the state level, they're trying to get this statewide registry of tourism facilities.
Okay.
Which would be good. Okay, so, this resolution would basically set the public hearing for April. So, I mean, does the April work session, which is the 9th, does that work for a public hearing for everybody?
Yeah.
Okay.
You say April 9?
Yeah.
April 1?
Yep. Okay, so, whereas the town board of the town of Cornwall has a local law before entitled, "A Local Law to Amend Town Code Chapter 132 Entitled Taxation" by adding new Article 8 entitled Hotel Room Occupancy Tax, and whereas in order for the town board to act on said local law, it is necessary to introduce it and hold a public hearing on it. Now, therefore, be resolved as follows. At the moment of this resolution does hereby introduce the proposed local law, that a public hearing on the proposed local law be set for April 9th, 2024 at 7:00 PM, and that do notice that the same is directed by publication and posting. Can I get a motion to approve?
Sure.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Edelman Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rotsch?
Yes.
Mr. Jordan Haskins?
Yes. Next up, I have a resolution. This would be to schedule a public hearing for the 2025 Community Development Block Grant. This is basically required by, you know, by federal statute. We have to hold a public hearing to allow the public to bring forth any, you know, eligible projects that they would like the town to propose. Obviously, the town has its own ideas of possible projects, So this is just something we do every year as an requirement to applying for the CDPG. Whereas, uh, heretofore, the town has determined to apply for the FY 2025 Orange County Community Development Block Grant, municipal grant. And whereas prior to completing the grant application, it is required that the town board hold a public hearing for input from the community as to what the town should apply under the program. And whereas it is necessary for the town board to adopt a resolution formally authorizing and retaining the town's consulting engineers to prepare and file the application. Now therefore be resolved as follows. That the public hearing on the application for the FY 2025 CDPG grant is set for, might as well do April 9th if you're okay with that, April 9th, 2024 at 7:00 PM, and that do notice that the same is directed to be given publication and posting. The town board hereby retains and authorizes energy engineer DPC to prepare and submit an application for a grant under the FY 2025 program. Can I get a motion to approve?
Certainly.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Edelman-Rance?
Yes.
Ms. Michael-Azze?
Yes.
Yes. Alright. Um, this next one, we're not, I mean, I, this is really, um, the summer rec, uh, rec camp IMA with the Village of Cornwall and Hudson. Spoke about this a little bit last week. We're not gonna vote on this tonight. But this is basically a redlined document, um, with some possible changes. Um, this'll have to be on the agenda at the first meeting in April, cause we gotta get this in place. Um, but basically, the, I guess, really the only changes is, you know, that there have been, you know, increases in salaries, um, you know, for minimum wage. There's an increase in costs. So we would basically, you know, after talking to the rec department, they had asked me if we would consider raising the rate from, last year it was at, you know, $300 for six weeks. Um, so they had asked me to bring it up to $350 for town residents, which include village residents. Um, and, you know, and then also that same $50 increase for non-residents who attend the Cornwall School District. So that, there's, there's that. And then the only other thing we kinda have to, you know, we're gonna probably spend somewhere around 95, 90, 95, 100,000 dollars on this, just depending on, you know. Last year, we ended up, uh, we didn't lose money on this last year. So, and there's also a, part of this too is that the village, they contribute, uh, $15,000 towards the running of this camp. So, you know, we get, we basically get, we get the fees from the, from the, you know, from the residents, and then the village chips in $15,000. The town is also on the hook for, you know, for, for also, for an equal amount of $15,000, if we need to spend it. Now, we don't know if we're gonna, you know, if our camp is not 250 kids, you know, obviously like it, like it all comes down to like enrollment. So this, um, this is why we kinda built this in here so that we would, uh, split any additional costs that were, you know, over and above the, the, you know, fee for the, for the parents. And so...
So basically you wanna still, uh, look this over and make comments?
Yeah, exactly. Yeah. Look it over. I mean, I do, I do think the only thing, so if, if just while you're looking it over, we could just kind of get some agreement, even if it's gotta be offline. So I could get, fill, you know, just in terms of like the, like the fees, right? By like the cost per parent, so that maybe by April 1st, if we could just get some direction, so we can at least tell the public that we're, that these are when the registration dates are gonna be. Cause we gotta start registering, right? Um, or we at least need to let the public know when those dates are gonna be.
Well, you're gonna say the, the work session is the 9th, so we...
We can do it on the 9th. So if, if, if you're all okay with, you know, holding this off till the 9th, but we gotta, um...
Right.
So I can bring this back on the 9th.
Okay, so work on the language and the things that we had discussed.
Yeah, and then I know, obviously, look, the village has a copy of the IMA too. Um, and I, you know, I know the mayor and the, the village trustees are gonna look at this. I don't know if they're gonna have any changes or not. But we're obviously gonna have to agree on this.
It's the same agreement as last year, basically. You're just changing the fees. So if you're...
Well, I also wanna talk about the allocation, you know, because I know it's limited. And the town last year, we had, I think it was 156 campers. And, um, you know, if we're splitting down the middle, that's, that's really as hard for the town. How, I wanna make sure that this is proportional to, what? You know, the population of the community. So like, I think we need to negotiate this. So it's, I think it's a little bit more fair. I know that, that word maybe not liked, but, uh, because the town also, any child that comes out of like, wins or that attends a Cornwall schools is counted in the town's numbers. So...
It does say 250, and it's from first grade to eighth grade.
Right. I just wanna make sure that maybe we specify the slots and then we go for there. If there's slots left over, then we roll over. But for, I, again, I, you have to discuss it tonight, but I still feel the same.
Yeah, I would just say that anyone that has proposed changes, you know, to this, um, I mean, obviously, we know how it worked out last year. We didn't have quotas or slots last year. And we know roughly, I think, how we, how we think it's gonna...
The numbers from last year, so...
So if the board's looking for substantive changes from last year's IMA, we might need to schedule, you might need to schedule a special meeting, because I don't know if you're gonna be able to iron that all out on the first. And we have to get, you have to get the village to sign off on that too. If it's just the numbers, I don't think that's gonna be a big deal. But if you wanna change the language we used last year, um, it's gonna take a little more.
I mean, the numbers as far as this being a little bit more specific enough. That's, that's all.
Well, is it, that with respect to the enrollment, it's gonna come through the software program, right?
Yes.
So is there a way to even effectuate such a proportionality idea if that was acceptable?
I don't know if there's a way to like, like you almost have to have, and then I guess the question is then...
We didn't have the software last year with this.
No, no, it was all, it was all paper.
I'm concerned in general for a number of things, because...
I mean, I don't wanna use the word quota. I just, again, I, I do think that...
Yeah, I think that's a good word, not to change.
Well...
But I understand the proportionality concern. I just wonder if that was even a problem last year. Did we have a difficulty? Uh, did, was there a difficulty in accepting?
There were some people that were left out, but honestly, the people that were left out, I mean, we had people trying to get in up until two weeks. And actually, we were enrolling people up until two weeks.
They didn't know.
Well, we'll publicize it, but I...
Yeah. And the other thing is, is I did speak with, um, the recreation department. Um, I brought up some concerns, because there's people that have grandchildren. They don't use the software, and they're concerned like if they're gonna get shut out. So I have been able to talk with Laura and say that all they have to do is to come into the recreation department and don't help them through the process. So I am trying to also make sure that those people aren't left out.
Okay. No, I mean, look, at the end of the day, we wanna make sure that we get as many kids into this as possible.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. So we're gonna, just, yeah, please, anyone that's got, you know, deadline changes, um... Okay, so, alright, next up, we have the Lands of Plaquen, Four-Lot Subdivision Recreation Fee Waiver Request. So I know we kinda went over this last week. Um, essentially, the board, unless something's changed, essentially, um, we believe that it's not appropriate for us to waive the, the rec fees in this. Oh, sorry.
Hey. Hold on, one minute.
Okay. Um, so, you know, I mean, that, that's my understanding, that the board is prepared tonight to basically, you know, turn down a request for the waiver of rec fees. Um, did, did you wanna add something?
Um, well, I don't know if the decision's already been made, but, um, overall, the town, it made an advisory comment, but it was submitted to the planning department, I mean, the county, I apologize, advising that the parcel be dedicated to the, to the county to avoid parking for the trailhead on the new private road or along Ors Mill Road. Uh, the, the planning board also required as a condition of approval that the developer dedicate that parcel to the county. The parcel was recently appraised at $145,000. The developer's contributing value to the county. He's creating recreational, a recreational venue, although, although it's not exclusively in the possession or exclusively of benefit to the town alone. The town, I believe, will benefit as a result of this. Uh, besides that, the, there was mention of the town possibly taking title of the parcel and then conver, conveying it to the county and getting the county to pay. The, the developer will gladly convey the 2.4 acres to the town, but this was per the approval of the planning board, and they request that it be dedicated to the county. So the, the owner is willing to convey to whichever party would want it. But I think overall, he is giving something of value, and the public will benefit from it. So I think in a sense, it would be double dipping to charge him a rec fee when he's providing recreational lands that the town will benefit from. Thank you.
Steve?
If the county wanted to, you know, buy it from the town, certainly that would be a workup. I don't know if the county's willing to do that.
No.
And, you know, for $12,000, I, I don't know how much trouble the town and the county are willing to go through, frankly. So I mean, if the board's just not willing to do this, that's, that's the answer there. I mean, I, I understand the argument. I, I get it. But you know, the board has other considerations. It looks like they're prepared to adopt the resolution denying it.
You all feel, still feel the same way?
I do.
Yeah, I think the, the major concern is that, you know, we have recreational facilities that need to be supported. These are people who will move into our community and use those existing recre, recreational facilities. And, and that's very, very important to everyone that lives here.
You know, building a parking lot doesn't, I mean, so I guess if you're typically, either you're going to build some type of, what? Rec facility to serve the, you know, the children or the, the residents of the subdivision that you're gonna build. In this case, you're building a parking lot. So I don't know if that's necessarily, uh, you kind of... And then, you know, on the other hand, I mean, certainly the folks that are gonna be living in this subdivision, I imagine would be coming to Riverlight Park and Laurel Crest and elsewhere. And, you know, rail trail's great. I mean, it's a county project. It's, it's not a town of Cornwall project. And so, you know, I think, you know, it seems to be like...
It's used by people who try to...
Yeah. Oh, yeah. I mean, it's more of a regional project, and I don't know that the town should have to, essentially, we weren't even involved in really much with the rail trail. We weren't, you know, we weren't invited in the...
The property owner could sell it to them for $12,000, and if they're $12,000, that way you say, that's easy. Through these mechanisms.
Okay, so I, I think we have our answer here. So, whereas the town of Cornwall Planning Board has granted approval for a four-lot subdivision of certain real property located off Ors Mills Road, uh, Planning Board Project Number 13-02, and whereas pursuant to New York State Town Law Subsection 277, the town planning board has determined that the subdivision presents a proper case for acquiring parkland for recreational purposes. But since the subdivision lands are not a suitable location for a park, the property owner should make a payment in lieu thereof, so-called recreation fees. And whereas the property owner has asked the town to waive the payment of recreation fees based upon the property owner's proposed dedication of land to the County of Orange for use as a parking lot for a hiking trail. Now therefore, here, it is hereby resolved that the property owner's request is denied, and that recreation fees in the standard amount shall be paid. Can I get a motion to approve?
Certainly.
Certainly.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Edelman-Rance?
Yes.
Ms. Michael-Azze?
Yes.
Yes.
Word members, do we also have the bond?
Yes. Yeah, no, I mean, uh, my understanding is obviously if you're seeking to do any land clearing, you have until, what, the end of March to start that. Um, so, okay. So, uh, Lands of Plaquen, Four-Lot Subdivision Performance Bond. Uh, whereas the, so basically, you know, this, this is the, this is the, uh, performance bond in the amount of $144,287.20. Whereas the town of Cornwall Planning Board has granted approval for a four-lot subdivision, the Plaquen Subdivision of Certain Real Property located off Ors Mills Road, Planning Board Project Number 13-02, whereas as a condition of subdivision approval, it is necessary for the property owner to post performance security in an amount determined by the town board. And whereas the town's engineering consultant has provided a cost estimate, a bond recommendation in the amount of $144,287.20. Now, now therefore be resolved as follows. That the town board hereby sets the required amount of performance security at $144,287.20. That said, performance security shall be posted with the town in the form of an acceptable to the town attorney. Can I get a motion to approve?
Certainly.
Certainly.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Edelman-Rance?
Yes.
Ms. Michael-Azze?
Yes.
Mr. Jordan-Husky?
Yes. Okay, so next up, I have a resolution for the Office of Leaging Amendment Number Four. So, yeah, this is number four. They basically are amending our contract to give us more units of service, and that will be starting sometime in March. So we, I'm sorry, April, uh, April 1st. So we actually have to get this in place tonight.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. So this just basically amends the existing agreement. You can see the amounts in the back. Gives it an additional almost $10,000. So this resolution would allow me to sign the agreement, put it into place. Whereas the town annually enters into a contract with the County of Orange for services to provide transportation for senior citizens to mother cottage or for related activities. And whereas the town of Cornwall has received an Amendment Number Four, to agreement for transportation services for residents 16 over from the Office for Leaging between the County of Orange and the town of Cornwall, whereas the town board wishes to enter into the said Amendment Number Four to the agreement with the county. Now therefore be resolved as follows. If the town board hereby agrees to enter into said Amendment Number Four, a copy of which is annexed to a two, if the town board hereby authorizes the supervisor to execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate the terms there. Can I get a motion to approve?
Certainly.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Edelman-Rance?
Yes.
Ms. Michael-Azze?
Yes.
Mr. Jordan-Husky?
Yes. Alright, this is gonna be the quickest agenda item all night. Um, so basically, you may recall that we had on the agenda last week, two proposals for removing the, um, you know, bridge down on the boulevard. Um, we've since spoken to the highway department, to our T P W, to see if they could do the job in-house. Thanks to Councilman McCarthy for looking into that. Um, and so basically, we just need to essentially, yeah, I think it's like a, rather thicker saw and possibly a bigger piece of, you wanna...
Tom, wanna talk about it?
Yeah, I mean, our equipment's a little undersized. We have a small excavator. So we're going back and forth between a saw or a jackhammer, but we're gonna run one piece of equipment, and we can get it out of there for a lot less than any of those bits, for sure.
Yeah. And then, and then obviously, it's reimbursed by FEMA, except that would happen at the end, once the project's completed and you, you know, submitted for, for reimbursement. I mean, but this would just allow us not to have to extend so much money out, you know, which would, you know, certainly help the budget. In terms of timing, you know, we're still trying to figure that out. Um, so until we have the exact timing as to when we're gonna remove the bridge, I know there's also, we're also looking into some other options about, you know, obviously, there's a lot of pedestrians that, you know, certainly not vehicles, but there's people that use, yeah, foot traffic, hikers, walkers, et cetera. So we're trying to figure out, is there a way that we can both remove the bridge, but put in some type of like pedestrian, something across that, you know, that they can get across? So that's, that's something we're looking into. Um, and so before we decide on a date when we're gonna remove the bridge, we wanna just sort of work out to see if that is like, you know, and I'm talking about something that we would, you know, build in-house that we can put in the place that people can just walk across. You know, as long as there's a safe way to do it, et cetera. The engineers blessed it.
I plan on filing for the permit tomorrow, and then I would imagine we could start next week.
Okay. So we'll, yeah, I mean, there's gonna be more to... Okay, so next up, we have a resolution, agreement with the Cornwall Historical Society, proposed amendments. So just make sure that I have the right, make sure we have the right amended agreement that does not have New Windsor in it. Just says, um, IT, right? Internet Technology Services.
During the duration of this agreement, the town shall provide IT services to the CHS through the town's IT contract with its provider. The CHS will reimburse the town for the cost of such IT services as invoiced by the IT provider. That's the, that's the language in the writing.
Yeah, and so that, and so that would allow, I mean, look, in the future, we don't know if we're gonna have New Windsor IT, et cetera. If we don't, this would allow, I guess, some flexibility, so we wouldn't have to come back and change the agreement.
Covers all contingencies.
Yeah, covers all contingencies. So... So, is it, is this acceptable, the amendment?
I vote aye.
No.
No.
Okay. All right, so it sounds like we're gonna do this. Whereas the Town of Cornwall has an agreement with the Town of Cornwall Historical Society, C H S. And whereas C H S has requested that the town provide assistance to it in securing Internet technology services to facilitate performance under the said agreement. And whereas the town board has before to draft rider to the existing agreement with C H S, adding a clause for provision of IT services for which C H S will pay the cost. Now therefore be resolved as follows. If the town board hereby approves and the said rider to the agreement with C H S. If the town supervisor is authorized to execute the said rider and all documents necessary to carry out the terms thereof. Can I get a motion to approve?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Elman Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rotsi?
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes. Okay, so next up, we have the three-minute rule. So, this resolution will basically put, impose time limits on public comment at town board meetings to a limit of three minutes.
Three minutes.
Well? Three minutes, yeah. It's three minutes, yeah.
About thirty minutes.
No, yeah, three, not thirty. Whereas the Town of Cornwall Town Board regularly receives public comment at workshops, meetings, and public hearings. And whereas in the interest of orderly procedure, the efficient transaction of government business, and to prevent filibustering. The town board wishes to impose time limits on public comment at town board meetings. Now therefore be resolved that a limit of three minutes shall be set for each individual's comments at any public comment portion of a town board meeting or public hearing. Can I get a motion to approve?
Second.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Elman Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rotsi?
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
And where is filibustering with?
I, I didn't.
I was like, weren't people gonna stand up and have a marathon?
Mr. Smith goes to town hall.
I've seen Stranger Things.
But next up, we have the Stop DWI Intermunicipal Agreement. Again, this is something we deal with here with the county. Whereas the County of Orange on behalf of the Department of Emergency Services has presented the Twenty Twenty Four Stop DWI Intermunicipal Agreement between the county and the Town of Cornwall. Whereas it is in the best interest of the town to enter into the agreement with the county. Now therefore be resolved as follows. Town board hereby agrees to enter into the Annex Twenty Twenty Four Stop DWI Intermunicipal Agreement between the county and the town. The town board hereby authorizes the supervisor to execute the agreement and forward the same to the County of Orange. Can I get a motion to approve?
Second.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Elman Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rotsi?
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes. Okay, so this, and I'm sorry, this should have said resolution in front of this. So this, this is basically a, this would essentially put the, the engineering agreement in place for Beaver Dam, Lake and Firthcliff Heights Sewer District for us to, to get started on a portion of the I N I projects. And to, and to keep on, you know, part of the schedule that the engineer had outlined. So this, this would basically allow us to do the relining of, of the, you know, of the manholes. Which is the cheapest and the lowest hanging fruit of the I N I process. All the other stuff is much, much more expensive. So, this allows us to get a start on that. It'll also potentially buy us some time with the D E C while we do this. And we can also seek funding for some of the more expensive stuff. We also, we already have the bond resolution in place. We already did that last year because, you know, whenever you're applying for WEA grants and other grants, you gotta have the bond resolution in place. We do intend to continue applying for funding for this, but we're at the point where, look, I mean, we're gonna keep applying, but we don't really think we have competitive applications for these because of the size of the district and we're not like a justice, you know, like an environmental justice community. And you don't meet this threshold and that threshold, so. But, you know, we do have a consent order, so we do have to start work. So we're kind of in this like weird place. And so this would be, we would be starting the relining, this would, you know, this would then have us doing basically work in all of our sewer districts. So Beaver Dam Lake Sewer District, and then the Firthcliff Heights, which you all know where that is off of, off of aisle three too. Question? Questions? No? Okay, so. Whereas the Town of Cornwall has received an agreement for engineering services related to Beaver Dam Lake and Firthcliff Heights Sewer District's I N I reduction from M H E Engineering. And whereas the town board agrees with the terms and conditions contained in the agreement. It would be in the best interest of the town to formally approve the agreement with M H E Engineering. Now therefore be resolved as follows. If the town board hereby approves the Annex Agreement for Engineering Services between the town and M H E. If the town board authorizes the supervisor to execute the agreement on behalf of the town and any documents necessary to secure performance under the said agreement. Can I get a motion to approve?
Second.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Elman Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rotsi?
Yes.
Yes. Number fourteen. So this is the license plate reader at Route Ninety-four and Dragon Drive. So. Sorry. Okay, so. Whereas the Town of New Windsor Police Department and the Cornwall School District have agreed to share a pole camera and license plate reader to be mounted on Central Hudson Gas and Electric Utility Pole Number N two-six-three-seven-nine. And whereas the said utility pole is located at the intersection of New York State Route Ninety-four and Dragon Drive. Whereas although the town does not have jurisdiction over or responsibility for New York State Route Ninety-four and Dragon Drive. The Town of New Windsor Police Department has asked for the town board's approval of the proposed installation of the pole camera and license plate reader to establish that there is no conflict with the town's utility franchise agreements and local jurisdiction over utility poles. Now therefore be resolved that the town board hereby approves the proposed installation of the pole camera and license plate reader on Central Hudson Gas and Electric Pole Number N two-six-three-seven-nine. Can I get a motion to approve?
Second.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Elman Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rotsi?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. So, end of year budget adjustments for Twenty Twenty Three. So our audit is, our auditors are gonna be in, I believe, starting tomorrow. And they're gonna be here for like, you know, roughly the next couple of weeks. You know, various days working on our Twenty Twenty Three audit. And so, these are basically, we do these every year. Basically, you're not allowed to have pluses and minuses. You kinda have to even everything out within the same funds. And so this is basically, you know, essentially plus-ing and minus-ing all of the accounts. You can kinda see where, you know, where these are. You know, some are revenue, some are. So, this is just basically like a pro forma thing we have to do before we start the audit. Any questions? Okay. So if I could just get a motion to approve the Twenty Twenty Three final budget adjustments.
Second.
Okay. Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Elman Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rotsi?
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes. Okay, so next up, we have Laurel Crest Park Use of Fields. So. First up, I guess we'll just, I'm just gonna kinda read these off. So, we've got Spring Break Soccer Camp. So, Cornwall United Soccer wants the approval from March twenty-fifth to the twenty-eighth to have a spring break soccer camp at Laurel Crest from nine AM to twelve PM. And then Cornwall United Soccer in the spring, they want Fridays from April twelfth to June fourteenth from five to eight PM. Those are their uses in the spring for Cornwall United Soccer. And then we've got the Cornwall Youth Lacrosse. They need Tuesday and Thursday from five to eight PM, and Saturdays from eight AM to one PM. And then.
Did you say lacrosse uses at eight AM to one PM on Saturdays?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what they put on there.
That's gonna interfere with the other group, cricket. Will they?
Well, they, they, they got theirs in, so here's the thing. So they basically, they've asked for, I think right now, we could approve for them and obviously they're gonna provide insurance.
Where's conference?
They would, they are looking for, the email they sent me.
How would that?
It's, they're looking for seven AM to eleven AM on Saturday and Sunday morning. I think we're gonna have to work out, cause obviously it looks like, there is some kind of conflict here with lacrosse on Saturdays. Cause I hope they use the whole field. So, I think we can approve them for Sunday from seven AM to eleven AM. From, and they're looking for, I think for now, we'll just do it for the spring. They want it April to October, but we don't have the other groups, so. So I think for now, we'll do Sunday from seven AM to eleven AM from, you know, April to June.
Yes.
Contingent upon insurance.
Yes. I think it should go only a few months, not the whole.
Yeah, yeah, well, I'm giving them the, the spring basically. So then, look, I'll, I'll reach back at the cricket, let them know that, tell them that they, I think we've already told them I gotta bring in insurance before we're allowed to.
Yes, we do, I do, yeah.
Okay. So.
Oh, so they're gonna do it this Sunday.
Yeah.
The youth, yeah, the youth has the priority.
No, I agree, I agree. So unless they can work something out on Saturdays with the other group, that's, they're gonna have Sundays. Okay, so if I could get, hearing all that, can I get a motion to, I mean, I can certainly read them again, but I think I've deconflicted it. So if I could get a motion to approve the dates and times from Cornwall United Soccer, Cornwall Cricket Club, and Cornwall Youth Lacrosse.
Wait a minute. No, it's the Cornwall Soccer.
And lacrosse.
And lacrosse, we don't have anything for cricket.
Yeah, no, I, I just read off what they had asked me for.
It came in late.
Yeah.
We're not, we're not approving Saturday for cricket.
Yeah, we're just giving them Sunday from seven AM. Yes. Nope.
I did write it down.
Yeah, if I, so if I could get a motion to approve contingent upon having insurance and proper paperwork, you know, filed with the court office.
Second.
Second. Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Elman Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rotsi?
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes. Okay, next up, the Highland Engine Easter Egg Hunt. If I could get a motion to approve for Saturday, March thirtieth?
Second.
Second. Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Elman Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rotsi?
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes. Next up, I have the Chamber of Commerce Twenty Twenty Four Car Show. Can I get a motion to approve the annual car show for Saturday, May twenty-fifth, and date of Sunday, May twenty-fourth?
Second.
Wait, oh, that, oh, the, oh, yeah, you're going backwards. So Saturday, the twenty.
Twenty-fifth, yep, twelve.
Maybe it's my, am I hearing properly?
No, no, it's, it's written in correctly.
It's written in correctly.
Oh, no, yeah, you're right, it is, sorry.
So the rainy, it's Sunday, May twenty-sixth.
I was just, I was just reading off of their.
Okay.
You know what, I hope they have changed that on their form they have. I'm sure people will pick it up, yeah.
It'll be fixed.
Gotcha, so it's.
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Elman Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rotsi?
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
They purposely did that so we'd see people pay attention.
They're not gonna be there in a short time. Okay. Agenda item nineteen, Black Rock Basketballster. So mine, they wanted to move this off, last year was what, later in the year? It was in what, June?
Yeah.
So this year, they wanna move it up to.
May.
Saturday, May eighteenth.
Isn't it that Mother's Day weekend? It just cares, there's nothing big in it.
You know, right. Should, you know what?
Partner.
That's pretty bad. It's the twelfth, yeah, sorry, it's the twelfth. I would pick the Black Rock Basketballster, it would be in trouble if they scheduled that for Mother's Day weekend. All right, so.
They'd be in major trouble.
Ah, yeah. Well, it would also be the same, cause your plant sale is also Mother's Day weekend, isn't that the day before?
It's the day before Mother's.
Yeah.
No, I'm thinking more of the mothers, like throughout fishing and then out with the kids. That'd be a blessing.
That would have been a.
I was gonna say Johnson.
That's true, they might be happy, here, Dad, take the kids fishing, bring us home.
That's fine.
Yeah, well.
Okay.
Yeah, that's true. So if I could get a motion to approve the Black Rock Basketballsters for Saturday, May eighteenth, or with the rain date of Sunday, May nineteenth?
Second.
Mr. McCarthy? Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Elman Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rotsi?
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes. Okay, next up, I have a vehicle purchase. It's a Twenty Twenty Four Ford Utility Police Interceptor. This is off the state bid list. It's fifty-four thousand, two hundred and twenty-one dollars and sixty-five cents. We, we budget for this every year, so this is, this is just following through with our standard management program we have. So if I could get a motion to approve the purchase of a Twenty Twenty Four Ford Utility Police Intercept, Interceptor, all-wheel drive. State bid pricing, fifty-four thousand, two hundred and twenty-one dollars and sixty-five cents.
Second.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Elman Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rotsi?
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes. Okay.
It's an Explorer that's made for police duty. It's a Ford Explorer with upgrades to make it an interceptor. All, all, all vehicle makes have interceptors, it's just spec'd out for police officers.
You ever watch Max?
Yes.
That's what I was like, you're so crazy.
I thought you guys still knew. Josh, before you read our resolution, I thought I did write the Main Street Revitalization Committee. But when you said Cornwall.
Oh, okay, so that's, sorry. Taken so many, yeah, it's fine, we'll change it.
Yeah. We just have to cross it. Cross the Cornwall, but Main Street Revitalization Committee.
That's, that's, I mean.
So we're just changing justification to revitalization?
It's gonna be the Main Street Revitalization Committee. And Main Street's gonna be, instead of listing all the streets, they're gonna be working on. Main Street's like synonymous with, you know, the downtown area with, like, we're not being like specific that they're only gonna be, you know, working on Main Street. But that's what the committee wanted to.
It's gonna be Main Street Revitalization Committee.
Yeah.
Yes, so you're changing justification to revitalization?
Correct.
Yes.
Revitalization covers everything.
Okay. Okay. So whereas heretofore, the town board of the Town of Cornwall created the Main Street Revitalization Committee. And whereas the said committee has requested that its name be changed to the Main Street Revitalization Committee. And whereas the town board is willing to grant the said committee's request for a name change. Now therefore hereby resolved that the Main Street Revitalization Committee is renamed and reconstituted as the Main Street Revitalization Committee. Can I get a motion to approve?
So you cut Cornwall out and put Main Street in?
Yes, I mean, I, I think it's, I don't think we have to call it one there. We know that it's Cornwall.
It's in the, their mission statement though. Their mission statement does, was mention's Cornwall.
Yeah. Did I get a motion to approve? Sorry.
Second.
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Elman Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rotsi?
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes. Okay, so next up, I have Town Tow List Application Denial. So we have a email here from the chief. We also have the inspection that was done by Sergeant Stoffield, and a copy of the application. My understanding is that they do not meet the regulations, code requirements required to be placed on the rotational towing list. That's correct?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, my understanding is that, I mean, a lot of it has to do with the, where the tow, you know, lot is, right?
It's a matter of the facility itself. There's a lot of provisions that weren't found there to be in accordance with the law.
Right, okay. So, and then I guess in order to reject the application, the town board just has to essentially vote to reject it.
Yeah, motion to reject the application has to. Yeah, a motion to reject the application has to link the acting town of Cornwall to us.
So moved.
Second. Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Miss Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Edelman Rice.
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rotsi.
Oh, yes.
Mr. Woodhouse.
Yes. Okay, next up I have a a series of uh training requests here. Um, first up, I had a request from the Assistant Building Inspector, Abigail Margonato. If I could get a motion to approve her three-day training conference um April sixteenth to the eighteenth.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Miss Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Edelman Rice.
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rotsi.
Yes.
Mr. Woodhouse.
Yes. Next up, I have um a a request from the Highway Superintendent to attend the annual highway school at at the College. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay. Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Miss Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Edelman Rice.
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rotsi.
Yes.
Mr. Woodhouse.
Yes, um next up I have a a request from the town clerk to attend the um annual conference in Albany. Um from April twenty second to the twenty fourth. Can I get a motion to approve the town clerk's conference in Albany?
So moved.
Second. Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Miss Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Edelman Rice.
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rotsi.
Yes.
Mr. Woodhouse.
Yes, um next up I have a request for myself to attend the um annual MYCOM conference at Golden Landing, taking place May fifteenth to the seventeenth. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Miss Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Edelman Rice.
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rotsi.
Yes.
Mr. Woodhouse.
Yes. So. All right, next up, I have um some appointments. So I'm gonna start off with the um Secretary to the Town Supervisor. Um, I would like to appoint uh Melvin Kelly to the position of Secretary to the Town Supervisor effective Monday, April twenty second, twenty twenty four. At a salary of fifty-two thousand dollars along with town benefits. Can I get a motion to appoint?
So moved.
Second. Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Miss Scott.
And thank you for um the staff for Pam and Jennifer.
Yeah, oh my god.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Ms. Michael Rotsi.
Yes.
Mr. Woodhouse.
Yeah, I mean, I can't tell you how much additional work Pam and all the staff have been taking on the past couple of months. Yep, so like, you know, welcome, obviously welcome back to the board when she's done with tax season and um she can, you know, join us, um so. Welcome aboard. Can I get a motion to approve? Uh, I really did.
Yeah, we can get it approved.
Twice, that's how much you want.
That's that's right, I know, I'm like, come on, we're here tomorrow, we're here tomorrow, you know?
I know.
There, um, okay, so then we have um court attendance. Let me just, sorry, here, I'll just get court attendance, okay. Um, so I have a a memo from the uh police chief here um looking to appoint part-time court attendants, Sean Wolf and Louis Pinero. Can I get a motion to appoint effective the date of the resolution?
Yes.
So moved. Second. Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Miss Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Edelman Rice.
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rotsi.
Yes.
Mr. Woodhouse.
Yes. All right, next up I have an appointment of a part-time police officer, Nicholas Bazios. Um. If I could get a motion to appoint Nicholas effective the date of the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Miss Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Edelman Rice.
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rotsi.
Yes.
Mr. Woodhouse.
Yes.
Supervisor, uh just for the record, in the memo, I missed typo. Um, it's, he actually worked for the Attorney General's office. Yep, that's the district attorney.
Okay. Okay, so next up, we have some more appointments to boards and committees. So first up, um, let's do um the tree warden. Um, I think it's absolutely, you've been trying to get a tree warden for many, many, many years now. Um, and thankfully Angelo Shabari has agreed to be our tree warden. Um, it's an annual appointment, so we're gonna have to do this every year at the reord. Um, so if I could get a motion to appoint Angelo Shabari as the tree warden.
So moved.
Second. Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Miss Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Edelman Rice.
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rotsi.
Yes.
Mr. Woodhouse.
Yes. Next up I have um two appointments to the Board of Assessment and Review. Um, first I have Lauren Big Solner, who's um sitting out there right now. And uh and also I don't think Dawn Patterson's here, but um. So for Lauren, um, we would appoint her with a term expiring September thirtieth, twenty twenty six. And for Dawn, it would be a term expiring September thirtieth, twenty twenty five. These are to fill, I guess, two vacancies that were in the middle of terms. So if I could get a motion to appoint uh Lauren and Dawn to the terms that I just laid out.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Miss Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Edelman Rice.
With our thanks, yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Michael Rotsi.
Yes.
Mr. Woodhouse.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. Um, okay, so next up I have a uh an appointment to, okay, so now it's, it's now the Main Street Revitalization Committee. So we can now appoint her to that. Um, can I get a motion to appoint Michelle Powell to the Main Street Revitalization Committee?
So moved.
Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Miss Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Edelman Rice.
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rotsi.
Yes.
Mr. Woodhouse.
Yes. Next up I have um two items from the Rec Department. So um I've got a request from the Rec Department for a um uh magic variety show for four hundred and fifty dollars. It will take place on May eighteenth. Um. So if I could get a motion to approve the variety show, you should have an email in there.
Mm-hmm. I'm ready.
So moved. What time is that, Ken? You know?
Uh, it's um, it's uh, right now it's uh.
There's a lunch before the show, so it's a.
Yeah, it's gonna be midday. Yeah, she's she's still, she's still working out the exact.
Oh, so.
Yeah, is it, uh, right now it's just gonna be May eighteenth, and then Phil's gonna get the flyer made up and we'll.
Okay.
My guess is ten to two.
Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Miss Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Edelman Rice.
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rotsi.
Yes.
Mr. Woodhouse.
Yes. Um, next up I have a comedy show. So this this is something that they brought to me um later uh late last week. Um, I have a comedy show that would take place on Saturday, April sixth, from three P M. to five thirty P M. Um, this would basically be a comedy show, there would be a light lunch served beforehand. This would be at Mugger Cottage. Um, and uh so if I could get a motion to approve this. So moved.
Second.
Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Miss Scott.
Yes, that is coming, this is coming from the branch from.
Yes, yeah, yep. And so actually, um I haven't, I'll wait till after the vote, but I I have an update because there's gonna be another one.
Yes, I.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
Ms. Edelman Rice.
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rotsi.
Yes.
Mr. Woodhouse.
Yes. Yeah, so so basically we got the um, you know, what's that? Uh, County Legislature Heinz, he reached out, they're gonna do it again, give him the details. So we have to decide if we're gonna do senior services again, or senior programming, are we gonna, you know, what do we wanna spend it on? I mean, it seems to be, you know, pretty good so far to spend it on the seniors, so I mean, obviously, uh, we can put it on the agenda, you know, for next month. And uh the uh Kevin had basically said, put everything on, he'll put in for it. So I I think that's pretty easy. Um. And then. Uh, number twenty-eight, items received after the final agenda was published. So I did receive this from the town clerk at five thirty tonight. Um, because it came into the office, I think today, and it's on, what, March thirty first? And we're not meeting again until the ninth, so this is the Hope United Methodist Church. Um, they have an event that they wanna do on uh, it's about the sunrise service? Yeah, so, yeah, so. Yep, so it's uh, March thirty first, six, six thirty A M. They just want the uh the quest to um do their sunrise service. Yep. Yep, I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Miss Scott.
Yes.
Miss Scott Edelman Rice.
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rotsi.
Yes.
Mr. Woodhouse.
Yes. All right, um, committee reports. Let's start with uh Councilmember Reyes.
Um, so the booking department, we're reporting on February, so it feels later. But they issued twenty-four permits, uh C and Cs that were eighteen and C of those were four. They did forty-five onsite inspections, collected over seven thousand dollars in term fees. And remain at twenty-nine open projects before the planning board. Um, the C B A considered appeals on three variances, which was associated with one property granted to and denied one of those variances. And the planning board um entertained two separate uh lot line changes. On the human resources front, we are continuing to collect salary data neighboring communities to compare it to our own. And how we um compensate our own employees. And we continue work on the employee handbook and hope to have a draft probably by the next board meeting.
Yeah, I think so. Okay.
Oh, and we're doing sensitivity training on March twenty eighth.
Yes.
Separate shifts and and the entire um employee set for the town of Cornwall will be attending one of the other shift. What's that? That includes us, yes.
Oh, yeah, no, members.
That includes everybody.
It's the twenty.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And that will be conducted by Jackson Lewis and um last ninety minutes for each shift. Very important training that's required by every employee.
Yes.
Do you want me to go?
Yeah.
I have one from the C C A C. Um, Ryan Kitsrow, I hope I'm not butchering his last name, from Blooming Grove, C A C. Um, was at the meeting and he alerted us that of a D E C public comments about clove road. Um, Councilman, Mr. McCarthy talked about Rings Pond and mentioned Angelo Shabari for becoming a tree warden. Yes, thank you. And Mr. Ted Warren is going to coordinate with Angelo for Arbor Day, um tree planting. And also Ted and another member, Kate, coordinating um the program that we do, River Keeper's Week. Uh, and they're gonna um talk to Cornwall cleanup crew and take the dates and have that done.
If I may touch.
Please, please, don't need.
Uh, that gentleman from, from Boongov, Sam, was he from Boongov?
Blooming Grove, yes.
He posted real good information about cloverwood development, which is off cloverwood, across maybe, I had. According to the volume of action. Um, but anyway, what they're, what they're trying to say is that they wanna have these pack and pack sewer plants that answer suitable for the size of their development. And they have to, when storms come on, or grow, grow capacity. And then mindset, they wanna open it up and just let it run down strawberry, the main clear, which flows into Moon River. Which will affect the aquifers down in our area in the new vine duck, you know, of our child, cloverwood and down and so on and so on and so on. That's something that moves from really to Pam there, across the town.
Okay. Thank you, Ted.
I also have one more. Uh, last night, um, Main Street Revitalization Committee met and uh they are going to have the um two, actually three parks. Um, starting with bridge, um the cleaning of the planters and uh for early spring, they're planting pansies. And um they're gonna just wait and see whether it's gonna do more planting on Rings Pond and the triangle. If the bridge doesn't happen, the county bridge.
Sure. Okay. Councilmember McCarthy?
Uh, how many departments are I have today? Uh, assisted sanitation, highway double pickup, metal pickups and case and cars. Street slip edge, all the roadways are debris wide after rainstorms, snowstorms. Repair road behind Rings Pond and Cad Street. I think we could be doing some warm repair behind that. Correct time, go do some uh potential uh drainage problems on Rings Road and uh over there by the ice house. Uh, anyway, uh, town street after heavy rain washouts, install new drainage pipes. Seasonal summer roads, uh create a level road for equator opening. Uh, repair mailboxes and winter pile, you know, areas of people's lawns and. And I cleaned out all the ditches with an excavator and long hair, extension out of care, Jack's now, but they removed cacti from Rings Pond. They're probably going back to drive, it gets warmer. Uh, locate manholes, uh engineering office for upcoming I N I. and bike sometimes gets warmer, locate manholes, uh, engineering office for upcoming I N I. I've got a map, that's massive for first clip and leave it down. Snow removed for town roads, sidewalks parking, removed a storm in the rain, which is eleven inches of fall ahead of Cornwall, snowstorm, washed all trucks, uh, snow, after snowfall events, spat salted and drift snow blown back roads, cloud them, clean sidewalks, remove equipment, parkour patches townwide from February twelfth to twenty-ninth, cleaned up and removed down trees from windstorm that we just had a couple of days ago. For the B D test, turf replacement code around them, cleaned up highway garage building in the yard, and also behind, uh, the buildings, grounds department too. Uh, we cleaned up over there, repaired, uh, completed town backhoe, uh, and computer issues at the building, uh, service senior bus, recyclable truck, ninety-six dump truck, replaced brakes on spare garbage truck, repaired a lot of golden trees, and still the trees on the twenty, twenty-ten dump truck, and repaired the motor and the twenty-twenty small dump truck. When Tom left out here, also that him and his crew are doing an absolute, outstanding job. I can't say enough about these guys. Not only do they have talent on the road, but they also have talent on saving the town their own money. Uh, they also replaced a, uh, a, uh, a pressure reducer valve over at Sandring Building, because there was no water in that building. They found, with the help of the coroner, to water department, uh, the two crews got together and they, uh, tracked it down and found out it was a bad, uh, bad pressure reducer valve. Instead of calling a plumber and spending a couple of thousand dollars to get that fixed and repaired, they went out and bought the pump themselves and installed it themselves to get the water back and run the service. Uh, the other thing, we found a safety issue with the handrail and the side steps in the town hall. That was, that was a huge liability. Uh, instead of spending about thirty-two, thirty-four hundred dollars to have some become a repair there, they went out and bought about a hundred eighty dollars worth of metal, built it themselves, ended it, put the twist tube, put the design on it, came back and put it in the ground within twenty-four hours. Uh, and my hands, it's incredible. And, you know, now we talk about doing it in-house on the bridge. I know, I, I think we need to really give an applause to the, to the highway department guys. Very talented people.
Josh, if I may.
Yes.
Since this has nothing to do with any topics here, this, it has come to my attention since the next month is April and Earth Day. Um, I know Jen has gone paperless, and I believe that at some point, I'm not saying, suggesting we should do it right now, or we can't, but at some point, we can use laptops and save this every month. We accumulate a lot of papers and printing, and it will cost less. I mean, uh, we can all bring our laptop, but it's, okay. Just wanted to go on the record and suggest this.
You know what? I mean, I don't know that we can make it a mandatory requirement, but certainly if, you know, board members, you know.
Or make sure you recite, or you have.
Yeah. I mean, that's certainly something that we can. That's certainly something that we can, that we can do. I mean, look, unfortunately, there is a lot of paper in government and the legislative process.
Right.
It's, you know, if you were to go up to the legislature and see the stacks of paper that are gonna be on their desks that they probably won't even read before they, you know, vote on the legislation, you'd probably be pretty, uh, but no, I, I agree. So I think, I think, you know, certainly whatever we can try to do to, you know, eliminate paper to see how we can streamline it, maybe there's a way to, you know, to eventually, you know, if we have tablets, you know, certainly something to look into, if the board members get tablets, and, you know, look, this is electronics, and we could just storm through it. Maybe there's a, you know, maybe once the new secretary starts, we could start trying to figure out some, get some more ways to use electronic devices and.
We're gonna have to clear for the I T also.
Yes. Yes, correct. There's a lot of, yes. Agreed.
Okay.
Thank you though for that.
That's just, uh, one other thing that I, I talked to Mayor Jackie Hall about throwing it together, about because we're gonna put an additional floor into the Como EMS building. Time has some numbers that have to come up for next month for reading, and I'll have to talk about that. And I think there'll be a couple of guys to help out, install that floor.
Great. That's great. Councilmember Scott?
I have no report from the Meathen Creek Interministerial Water Check Committee. I'm gonna have to reach out to Simon and find out what's going on, because he's in charge of actually scheduling the meetings, and I haven't heard back. But I really do want to get an update in terms of what's going on in terms of Mill Street and some other issues that are going along the move now. We haven't, I haven't heard anything, and I think it's important to know.
Last I, you're saying in terms of that, last I heard, though, I mean, obviously, and this isn't.
The county is, I know, is in the, I could.
Yeah. Yeah, we can't really say too much about it, but I mean, yeah. So there should be more on that at some point, but we've not heard anything.
No. Okay. Um, as far as the lighting and the, um, and the chargers, I know that you and I have had conversations. I do have ideas in terms of pricing. A lot is gonna come to the software, which I did reach out, so we could coordinate that. I know that you also talked.
Yeah.
With me, with meeting with Mr. Tommy Gershwin about.
I think it makes sense.
The lighting.
Yep.
And in terms of looking at the controls together and coming up with a plan, how, how are we gonna handle it?
I mean, we haven't even had the final walkthrough.
Exactly.
With all that.
There's a lot of loose ends to tie up.
I've been exploring. I have a login. I've messed with the one outside of my house with my phone a few times.
What's it for?
It works.
Okay, well, I'm glad to hear that.
Works.
Right. And I think that's about, we haven't had any, you know, complaints that we know.
I haven't turned any into anyone's house yet.
Okay.
There's also a separate, so there's the app where you can.
Yeah.
Smart controls, we have this other app where you report averages and issues.
Exactly. So there's a lot of things you gotta look at, software. But the E V charger should be coming out. I'm hoping they're gonna come online before the end of, of April. I'm really wishing to get it soon.
You know what? We fought, so we sent over, we actually overnighted the, you know, executed, uh, you know.
The easement?
Easements over them. I reached out to Jason Malisa, and I was like, look, can we please, like, not have, and he was like, all right, he was like, we probably can't have them do the install during, like, the week of Easter. He was like, but by April eighth, we can have the install done.
Okay.
He actually gave me, he was like, look, by April eighth, the install will be done.
Okay.
Once the install is done, then we can actually power them up and.
Okay, good.
So.
All right.
So I keep getting asked, we're sending, so that if that happens, then we can maybe on the ninth, discuss rates.
Yeah.
And then on the sixteenth, maybe we can adopt yours.
Exactly. Okay. That sounds good. Um.
I would like to request that we maybe put some sort of concrete pad around them for winter time.
I think it's a good idea.
And people can still access them.
Yep. I think it's a great idea. Um, the other thing is the senior advisory committee. We are gonna meet on Monday, the twenty-fifth, at one o'clock. Um, I have to say, the county has been very responsive. Uh, when I reached out, we talked about the quality of the senior dining program. Um, they met with myself and one of the senior representatives on the fourteenth, and, um, they have agreed to come to the meeting on the twenty-fifth to talk to us, not only about the, the senior dining program, um, transportation issues that the seniors have, because they do have limited access. I mean, we do, we're very fortunate to have a senior bus, but the problem is, is it's after, you know, after hours, and they're very limited, and they do wanna, they wanna be more active. You seniors who really do wanna be active, they just don't have the transportation. Uh, and then the other thing that, um, they, they're also, they pointed out to us, there are a lot of programs beyond the county, which we're gonna learn about. And, um, one of the major things we really need to do, and once we have this meeting, is to tie into the county site, because there are so many programs that are available to seniors, and, and their families should go about it to help their parents, you know, get access, especially through the community. And I think the last thing I have to say, there is, um, at showtime, um, this up, upcoming Monday on the twenty-fifth, they have actually, they do a whole program on March twenty-sixth. These are movies they do. Um, it's called King Arthur. And what it is, is the seniors, they're not seeing old movies, they're seeing, like, current movies that are out there, so they can get transportation there, popcorn and soda. And again, it gives them an hour in during the day. Um, so, um, I think there's a lot of good things coming from the county. I just think it's the whole idea of tying into what they have and, and helping them, you know, the seniors voicing what they need and how they can improve it. So I thought, I was very grateful for the, um, for the meeting, and I think that, uh, it was very positive, and I think we're gonna move in a better direction.
Great.
That's it.
Thank you.
What about the door? My door. Um, can you?
No, 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 no.
All right. Um, the Calorwell Police Department, for the, uh, stats for February, calls for service seven hundred and six, miles driven, six thousand seven hundred and seventy, traffic and appearance tickets issued, forty-three, parking tickets issued, one, motor vehicle accidents reported, twenty-three, estimated five, uh, ninety-one hangups, eight, alarm, residential business, there was twenty-one, ambulance requests, three to four requests, animal complaints, five, criminal mischief, one, disabled vehicles, sixteen, domestic incidents, eleven, parking complaints, two, suspicious, uh, suspicious vehicle, a person, six, house checks, seven, uh, zero calls for vandalism, assist other agency, eleven. Um, just, I guess, a couple of updates from me. Um, we still do not have the county bridge, the, uh, on Main Street, that's not locked down yet. Um, I'll know more shortly, but it's just, there's, you know, again, you know, when you're bidding these out, you never know what you're gonna run into. So I believe the county's having some issues with that. Yeah, with that. So as soon as I have something more firm, um, you know, from the county, you know, look, it's either gonna happen soon, um, you know, because remember, they had pushed this off a year, because they wanted to be able to start earlier in the spring. And if it's not gonna start early enough, it's possible that it gets pushed off the next year. But we're waiting for the county to let us know. Again, it's their bridge. Um, you know, they're in the driver's seat on this, and, you know, you never know what happens when you're going through the bidding process, if you're having difficulty with folks that have bid, et cetera. So I should hopefully know in the next month, because honestly, there was something supposed to be in the stream, what, April, right?
Originally, yeah.
Yeah.
Is there any way we can, um, enforce it in a positive way that you would like to have it this year, or you all control?
It's gonna come down to, look, they've gotta basically award a, you know, contract to one of the bidders, and they gotta get it all in place, and that can't happen.
I believe they already awarded the contract to the lowest bidder, but now the lowest bidder's having issues.
Yeah. So I, I didn't wanna get too much into it, but yeah. So, you know, honestly, we don't, I, I would love for, you know, just to get it out of the way, but.
So fingers crossed.
Yeah, fingers crossed. Um, the Hasbrook Drainage Project, so, you know, look, we're continuing to work towards that. Um, there's gonna have to be some limited tree clearing on, you know, on some of the properties to do the installs. So we're kind of trying to get those exact locations from the engineer, so we can work those out. So that's gonna be happening. And then, you know, I wanna say, what, sometime in, when we pass up on resolution, it was in, uh, February, so basically.
Yeah.
Three months from that date is when we can go to the market to borrow. Um, but, you know, in the meantime, we're gonna be doing the bidding on the project, so expect to see, sometime in April or May, we'll be, you know, bidding it out, and, you know, hopefully, obviously getting troubles in the ground this year, because that's really important to have that happen. But, you know, we are still on the track with that. Um, that's the Hasbrook Drainage Project. Um, the, just I, I actually have a couple of things on the conservation advisory committee, too. So just, um, you know, I know that Carla or, you know, I guess another member of the committee may be here next month to just, you know, update us on some stuff. But, you know, I know they have some pieces of legislation that they might be bringing to the town board, you know, like wetlands, repairing, um, possibly lighting, you know, law, just some requests that they want, you know, to have the town board consider as possibilities. And then, you know, there's some other stuff. Um, so I believe they're gonna be bringing that to us in the next, you know, month or so. But, um, that's the conservation advisory committee. And then, yeah, I mean, look, you know, we're about to start, you know, as the weather gets warmer, you know, we're gonna be out doing more work, having to get the grounds prepared. We're gonna have holidays, you know, starting to come up, you know, Memorial Day, you know, Fourth of July. So we're gonna have a lot of work to start doing pretty soon. Um, the, um, you know, we're gonna have to de-winterize all the trucks, which I think you said we're gonna do pretty soon here.
Just a couple nights to get through here, but.
Well, we do, we do, obviously. But, um, you know, you know, again, I mean, I can't say enough about the highway department. You know, like Councilmember McCarthy said here, they really do a lot of work, and we're gonna be trying to use them even more to save as much money as possible. Um, and so, you know, I'm sure there's more I can say, but I wanna preserve my voice here, so I'm gonna stop talking there. Uh, so, is, is there anything else from any board members? No? Um, okay. So I guess we'll go back to public comment. Is there any public comment? No? Okay. Um, actually, I don't think we gotta go with the closed session. So if I could just get a motion to adjourn.
Second. Ms. Scott.
Yeah.
Ms. Edelman Rice.
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rotsi.
Yes.
Mr. Woodhouse.
Yes.